...get the meeting started. A pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic in which it stands, "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." So tonight we have three public hearings. It is Monday, July 13th, starting at 5:00 p.m. here at the Opera House. I'll read just a little blurb and then I'm going to turn it over to Caitlin. The town of Littleton Board of Selectmen will hold three consecutive public hearings on Monday, July 13, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. in the Grand Hall located at the Opera House at 2 Union Street, Littleton, New Hampshire, 03561. To hear public comment on a community development block grant, public facilities proposal to the New Hampshire Community Development Finance Authority, up to $500,000 annually is available on a competitiveness basis for each housing slash public facilities, economic development, and emergency activities that directly benefit low and moderate income persons. Up to $25,000 is available for planning grants. Municipalities are eligible to apply for a micro enterprise assistance grant without having it count against the town's cap for any other CDPG projects. So at this point, I would like to introduce Caitlin Robinson, and she's from the Northern Community Investment Corporation, to introduce the project and answer any questions to share. There are handouts here for these public hearings at the front of the table right here at the end. So if anybody wants one, feel free to get one.
Do we need officially open the public hearing?
I don't have that down, but you know what? Let's cover ourselves. So I'll entertain-
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
That's the agenda. Here you go.
Second to open the public hearing.
Oh, I'll second. Okay. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.
So Auntie Jackson, I work for Northern Community Investment Corporation. As she said, there are people out there who need to step up in the front of the row. She has information to share with you all today. I'm going to read through the script, so I'll set this on the order to what she wants to share. Community development block grants are available to municipalities on a competitive basis for development, public facilities, housing facilitation projects, and planning grants that primarily benefit low and moderate income persons. The town will be eligible for up to $500,000 a year for public facilities and housing, up to $500,000 a year for account development projects, as well as up to $500,000 a year in emergency funds. Planning grant funds are available for up to $25,000. Municipalities are eligible to apply for micro enterprise assistance grant without having it count against the town's cap for any other CDPG projects. This is a proposed public facilities application to the community development grants for the year up to $200,000 in 2020 community development block grant funds. A minimum of $1.000 match is required, which will be provided for a two base submitted application to the Economic Development Administration, as well as bond funds that were approved at the March 2019 Town Meeting as our component two. The positively used conjunctions have approved any more other grant funds to meet the main street phase two project. The project includes water and sewer upgrades, improving vehicular and pedestrian traffic along Main Street, Meadow Street, Bridge Street, Saranack Street, and downtown Littleton. This won't put the impairment of a right of way and intersectionary line in front of the track to a safe nightingale and consumption of Main Street from Bridge Street. Meadow and Main Streets will benefit from infrastructure updates, passive calming, including narrowing up the roadway, curbing the paths, expanded side locks on pedestrian crossings, as well as improved signage, signals, and lighting for vehicles and pedestrian traffic. Small parking areas will address the completely downtown parking issues and expand access to Littleton's old and old trails. This project conforms to the town of Littleton's proposed housing and community development handles of encouraging growth in commercial industrial areas, continuing to work within the five-year plan for water and sewer improvements, and supporting the redevelopment of the River District. Are there any questions either from the board or from the help of the projects?
You're mine.
Caitlin Robinson, I work for Northern Community Investment Corporation, so we assist-
What's your association with the town of Littleton?
We work with the town to provide grant writing assistance, support on the project development, and grant management.
You work with the town or you work with the cell community?
Both.
No, no, it's not. The town is all that. The cell community is all here.
So we work-
What size do you take? About a seven million pounds? Do you talk with the people?
We do.
Yeah, I think really what we want to do is just kind of stay on task as far as what the information is.
That's what I try to do. I try to justify it now. Who's disallowed?
Yeah.
Who's disallowed? I come and so here, and she say, you know, okay, I'm going to ask you for every million dollars because of the town. What town? Littleton? Littleton is all here, you know, they're not here, not here, over there.
Of course, I think you have your line to-
Yeah, I mean, if you just want to, just to clarify, so I, what, the town has a contract with NCIC, and so they are a contractor of the towns, and so we utilize them to move forward projects that was in the town's mission, and this is one of them. So that's what the relationship is. They work for the town of Littleton. And to clarify further, the select board represents the town.
No, they're not representing the town. They're representing themselves.
And then I work, I work for them, so.
I understand that, that you work for them. But it's all here. We're now we made about 200 pounds, given to all the people who live down, which are there on a Monday about this all year. Right? What are they going to do, call the DCO, they're all here, and she going to explain it to about 200 people?
Yep. So this, this project has been presented to the public a number of times. Originally, this was part of a project called Main Street Phase One. Main Street Phase One ran out of funds, and so it was ended at the diner. What this does is it picks up the original Main Street footprint and carries, carries it through to completion. It's been presented to the public. This is also a sewer project, and just like a lot of the other projects that we have in town, this falls in the sub area, in the sewer system called Sub Area Two. And so this isn't Sub Area Two in its entirety, but it's a piece of it. And so this was also presented to the voters at town meeting. I think it was one article last year, one article of two, so.
So the income portion of the board, where did it go?
Two. The sewer portion, yes.
Oh, oh, you're talking about sewer.
Yep. Yep, and so this project is multifaceted in that it, just like the project that we did, for example, on Saranack and Amadusek, it'll address the sewer portion, which is the Sub Area Two portion, and then also will do streetscape improvements. So just like you see where there's bump outs and parking, street trees and that sort of thing, pedestrian improvements on Saranack and Amadusek, this is similar in that way. So this one's a little more complicated because it does require coordination with the Hantrick Park transportation, and the funding sources are also pretty diverse. We, we're working with them right now on coordinating their paving schedule. They, they actually had this area in the 10-year plan to be paved this year, and in an effort to work with us, they've delayed it because the project will actually require, you know, some cutting and digging into the Main, Meadows, Main Street, Meadow Street for sewer-
If you were to have a negative input on this particular project, you understand what I said? If you were to have a negative input from the people, what are you going to do? Cancel?
I would, I would think so. I mean, it would ultimately be a support, but yeah, I wouldn't think so. I think that because of what Caitlin mentioned before, this project is supported by the master plan, which is the people's plan. It's also supported by the ongoing sewer stormwater project that we have to, to maximize the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant by, you know, eliminating flow from the stormwater system. It, it meets so many different community goals that I think even if it was, unless it was overwhelming negative input and the board decided to, you know, direct us to stop, then I think that it would be something that the town would continue to move forward with.
But you would have taken consideration if you were to have some negative input from the people out there, right?
I think, I think the board is always, you know, welcomes input from everywhere. I do too. You know, we take into consideration, I think that, you know, you yourself have brought things up before that, you know, ultimately it resulted in some kind of a change based on, you know, new information that we hadn't considered. So I would say it's not out of the realm of possibility, but for the most part, this project, I think, has been pretty well vetted as far as, you know, it meeting so many goals for the community.
I'd also just add, if you don't mind, that the warrant number that was approved in March of last year, the citizens required that to utilize those funds, that there was at least a 35% match. So this project is far exceeding that requirement that the citizens wanted to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, would the chair like to make a motion to those in the public hearing and move on to the next?
Do we have to keep this open though for half an hour?
Oh, right.
By law, I think it has to stay open for half an hour.
Okay.
So what we'll, yeah, what we'll do is, because you're going to be here for all three, correct?
Yeah.
So at 5:30, we start our regular board meeting, but we can roll right into the second hearing.
Okay.
Then we'll do the board meeting, so it's going to be some, a little bit of overlap.
All right.
So we get to sit here and twiddle our thumbs, unless anybody has any other questions. We do have to leave it open until 5:30.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Caitlin.
Do we have separate public hearings on the, the other two items?
They should be back to that.
Yeah.
You need to do the second public hearing.
So you could open the second one.
Now.
Okay. So we can do it now?
Can.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, you can open the next, but don't close the first.
Don't close them. Okay. All right. So then we're going to want to close this one at 5:30. All right. So well, let's go into, I'll need a motion to open up the second.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we will open up the second public hearing for discussion of the proposed housing and community development plan.
So the housing and community development plan, that's in your hand out there. This is an update of the housing and community development plan approved last year. This plan covers the period 2020 through 2023. It includes the national state community development block grant such as objectives as required. A housing and community development plan that is no more than three years old is a requirement for applying to CDPG funds. The projects in the housing and community development plan are both consistent with building a master plan. The project will benefit low and moderate income individuals in the greater community population. Questions and comments on that housing and community development plan?
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to close the second public-
Or open. You have to leave it open still for, I think, the 30 minutes.
Oh, right, right, because we can't close it.
Right. I'm keeping track of when you open it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll have to take a motion or make a motion to open up the third.
Do we want to see if there's any comment or?
I think she just asked, but nobody did, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second.
All right. So the third public hearing is now open. Thank you, Caitlin.
So the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan is standard language that provides a procedure in cases where there is a residential or business displacement project using CDPG funds. It must be adopted for each CDPG project. For this project, no displacement or relocation is anticipated. The plan must be adopted in the unlikely event that this placement does take place. Are there any questions or comments on the housing, the residential anti-displacement and relocation plan?
Where, where?
It's in your name.
Where is that? Littleton?
Yes, for the-
Is it relocation, did you say, or what? Wait.
So there, for this project, there's no anticipated relocation or anti-displacement that would take place with this main street project, that is discussed in the first hearing. However, it still needs to be adopted so that the plan happens just when if a business or a resident was to be dislocated, this is the plan of how the town would handle that and how they would amend that.
Now we can sit here.
Change, don't you think this issue be more transparent without people coming to the meetings? Because you're on 11 o'clock and people still working. And that level, I made a few calls for people to come over here, if you want to come, say you're working or not. This all here, you want me to bring the caps in this all here? Because people want to drop my bag there, they want to, of the business, of the people that I know, I give the caps, or you're going to do it?
You don't need to just answer a little bit of his-
It's more transparent than it is right now. It's only it, you know, after this year or a year of this.
I think that, you know, that I'm not opposed to, you know, trying to get it in all the hands of the businesses. We will be communicating with everybody who is in the project area, but the project itself, I think, and Caitlin knows very well, we've gone, we've, this project's actually been in the works, so we've tried different methods to get grant funding, the Tiger, federal Tiger program, the federal Build program, and I think we've actually gone through that for, I don't know if, and John could answer if it was even before I was here, but I think four or five years.
I think for at least four years.
Yeah. So it's been, you know, talked about in the public arena for quite some time, also, you know, the newspapers. I don't know if radio has covered it, but it's been, it's been around for a while. But Rudy, to your point, we-
It's in this week, you know, it's in this week.
It'll be in this week, I'm sure, but, you know, it, I'm just saying that the project itself, Main Street Phase Two, has been in the newspaper quite a few times over the past four years, you know, three, four years, so.
It's good.
But, but your point as far as-
This is just precaution.
Oh, yes.
Any other questions or comments on the relocation plan? I think you still, it's probably not 5:30, I'm not going to watch, but-
No, not quite. We have like 13 minutes, and we'll close out the first one.
Okay.
Yeah. But that also means 13 minutes before we start our board meeting. Cool. Thank you. I'll get the devil's. I want to check. I want to make sure. 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 I think that because of what Caitlin mentioned before, this project is supported by the master plan, which is the people's plan. It's also supported by the ongoing sewer stormwater project that we have to, to maximize the capacity at the wastewater treatment plant by, you know, eliminating flow from the stormwater system. It, it meets so many different community goals that I think even if it was, unless it was overwhelming negative input and the board decided to, you know, direct us to stop, then I think that it would be something that the town would continue to move forward with.
But you would have taken consideration if you were to have some negative input from the people out there, right?
I think, I think the board is always, you know, welcomes input from everywhere. I do too. You know, we take into consideration, I think that, you know, you yourself have brought things up before that, you know, ultimately it resulted in some kind of a change based on, you know, new information that we hadn't considered. So I would say it's not out of the realm of possibility, but for the most part, this project, I think, has been pretty well vetted as far as, you know, it meeting so many goals for the community.
I'd also just add, if you don't mind, that the warrant number that was approved in March of last year, the citizens required that to utilize those funds, that there was at least a 35% match. So this project is far exceeding that requirement that the citizens wanted to see.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? If not, would the chair like to make a motion to those in the public hearing and move on to the next?
Do we have to keep this open though for half an hour?
Oh, right.
By law, I think it has to stay open for half an hour.
Okay.
So what we'll, yeah, what we'll do is, because you're going to be here for all three, correct?
Yeah.
So at 5:30, we start our regular board meeting, but we can roll right into the second hearing.
Okay.
Then we'll do the board meeting, so it's going to be some, a little bit of overlap.
All right.
So we get to sit here and twiddle our thumbs, unless anybody has any other questions. We do have to leave it open until 5:30.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Caitlin.
Do we have separate public hearings on the, the other two items?
They should be back to that.
Yeah.
You need to do the second public hearing.
So you could open the second one.
Now.
Okay. So we can do it now?
Can.
Oh, all right.
Yeah, you can open the next, but don't close the first.
Don't close them. Okay. All right. So then we're going to want to close this one at 5:30. All right. So well, let's go into, I'll need a motion to open up the second.
So moved.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So now we will open up the second public hearing for discussion of the proposed housing and community development plan.
So the housing and community development plan, that's in your hand out there. This is an update of the housing and community development plan approved last year. This plan covers the period 2020 through 2023. It includes the national state community development block grant such as objectives as required. A housing and community development plan that is no more than three years old is a requirement for applying to CDPG funds. The projects in the housing and community development plan are both consistent with building a master plan. The project will benefit low and moderate income individuals in the greater community population. Questions and comments on that housing and community development plan?
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to close the second public-
Or open. You have to leave it open still for, I think, the 30 minutes.
Oh, right, right, because we can't close it.
Right. I'm keeping track of when you open it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So we'll have to take a motion or make a motion to open up the third.
Do we want to see if there's any comment or?
I think she just asked, but nobody did, yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a, I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Okay, I'll second.
Second. All right. So the third public hearing is now open. Thank you, Caitlin.
So the residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan is standard language that provides a procedure in cases where there is a residential or business displacement project using CDPG funds. It must be adopted for each CDPG project. For this project, no displacement or relocation is anticipated. The plan must be adopted in the unlikely event that this displacement does take place. Are there any questions or comments on the housing, the residential anti-displacement and relocation plan?
Where, where?
It's in your name.
Where is that? Littleton?
Yes, for the-
Is it relocation, did you say, or whatever? Wait.
So there, for this project, there's no anticipated relocation or anti-displacement that would take place with this main street project, that is discussed in the first hearing. However, it still needs to be adopted so that the plan happens just when if a business or a resident was to be dislocated, this is the plan of how the town would handle that and how they would amend that. Amen to that.
Now we can sit here.
Change, don't you think this issue be more transparent without people coming to the meetings? Because you're on 11 o'clock and people still working. And that level, I made a few calls for people to come over here if you want to come, say you're working or not. But this all here, you want me to bring the caps in this all here? Because people want to drop my bag there, they want to, of the business, of the people that I know, I give the caps, or you're going to do it?
You don't need to just answer a little bit of his-
It's more transparent than it is right now.
So the project-
It's only it, you know, after this year or a year of this.
I think that, you know, that I'm not opposed to, you know, trying to get it in all the hands of the businesses. We will be communicating with everybody who is in the project area, but the project itself, I think, and Caitlin knows very well, we've gone, we've, this project's actually been in the works, so we've tried different methods to get grant funding, the Tiger, federal Tiger program, the federal Build program, and I think we've actually gone through that for, I don't know if, and John could answer if it was even before I was here, but I think four or five years.
I think for at least four years.
Yeah. So it's been, you know, talked about in the public arena for quite some time, also, you know, the newspapers. I don't know if radio has covered it, but it's been, it's been around for a while. But Rudy, to your point, we-
It's in this week, you know, it's in this week. It's not, it's not in this week.
It'll be in this week, I'm sure, but, you know, it, I'm just saying that the project itself, Main Street Phase Two, has been in the newspaper quite a few times over the past four years, you know, three, four years, so.
It's good.
But, but your point as far as-
This is just precaution.
Oh, yes.
Any other questions or comments on the relocation plan? I think you still, it's probably not 5:30, I'm not going to watch, but-
No.
Not quite. We have like 13 minutes, and we'll close out the first one.
Okay.
Yeah. But that also means 13 minutes before we start our board meeting. Cool.
So it's five thirty, we can go ahead and start the regular Board of Selectments meeting for July thirteenth. And before we do that, we are going to close out the first public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close out the first public hearing.
Okay.
No second?
Okay. We're closing out the first public meeting at five thirty.
You have a better voice.
I will speak up, Rudy, thank you, thank you. So we've got a first and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. And we will close out the second public hearing at five forty-two, and then the third one at five forty-three.
You are going to vote on this particular subject, right?
Yes.
You will?
All right, so under appointments today, we have River District Redevelopment Commission, Riverfront Commons update, maybe some other updates, not sure. And with us is John Hennessy, Chairman of the River District Redevelopment Commission.
Yeah, that'd be good. All right, good evening. Select Board, just update this for you to bring everyone up to current on the status of the River District Revitalization Project. In particular, the Riverfront Commons Project, or the Murrell property, as a lot of people have referred to it as, due to Mr. Murrell owning it right now. But I'll just take one minute to get us up to speed on where we've come to get to this point. So, so far, the River District Revitalization Commission, and you, the Select Board, and Andrew have worked since two thousand twelve on this project. And we have completed or funded four million dollars worth of projects so far. That includes the Mill or Porter Street Demonstration Project, the Bridge Street Pedestrian Bridge, Saranac and Ammanusick Street Reconstruction, and funded but not yet constructed the Cottage Street and Mill Street sidewalks. And we feel pretty good about the funding package that we've been able to put together over the years for this. Promised the voters who have put in seven hundred thousand dollars towards this project, a two-for-one match with outside funds. We've been able to match that seven hundred with three point three million, so it's almost a five-to-one match. So we feel pretty good value was achieved for the town of Littleton and taxpayers. And we certainly are looking to continue that trend as we move forward. There are two additional, let's see, projects that we're going to talk about tonight. One, they're both related to the Riverfront Commons. And Andrew's got a rendering that he'll put out to look at as we talk about this. But originally, in two thousand nineteen, we presented an eight hundred thousand dollar project to the taxpayers and asked through a Warren article for the taxpayers to vote in a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which would be, it's a guaranteed two-for-one match there too, but we've been able to achieve six hundred and twenty-five thousand a match for that. So it's over a three-for-one match, so we feel good about that too. And the objective there was to purchase that seven acre parcel that you can see up here in this rendering, and also to revitalize it, turn it into about a fifty to eighty space parking lot for the downtown community and senior center, as well as to refurbish the property to level it out, make it more attractive for community use. So really, the big thanks there go to Caitlin and Mike Walsh from NCIC. Andrew, they've done the heavy lifting, things got moved. I stepped out of the way. To answer the previous question, we did try and fail four times at Mill Grant. So now we've got the real pros involved, and I've stepped out. So I didn't really be successful with some of the strategy you talked about tonight. So the timeline for this project is, the appraisal and land purchase will be the summer of two thousand twenty here, comes right up. Engineering should be fall and winter of two thousand twenty, and then construction will begin next construction season in two thousand twenty-one. So there'll be a whole RFP process this fall to, excuse me, selecting engineering firm or move toward like town projects typically progress. An important addition to that is that through NCIC and the town, and Andrew's hard work and his team, the town secured an extra five hundred thousand dollars of funding through CDFA tax credits. And that's with no additional requirement to be put in from taxpayers. So a great additional piece of funding, and what that'll enable the town to accomplish is to refurbish the barn structure that's on that property once purchased into a community asset. Community building and use can still be determined by the town itself, it's not set in stone yet as to exactly how that'll be used. And also to help reconstruct the rail trail, pull the rail, and have a connection from the rail trail down to that property as well. So now the mission for the group is to go out and sell those tax credits. The way that works is businesses in the community, which have been very generous in the past on similar types of projects, will make commitments to buy those tax credits and then through using them to pay taxes through the state of New Hampshire, can get an offset from the state through this program and end up paying about, up to only twenty percent of that commitment they end up making. So we're really hopeful that the businesses, and we've got some commitments already in hand, will be equally as generous as in the past. And that'll be a successful program, we'll sell those over a two-year period, two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one. The other project is the rail trail itself that's in the state of New Hampshire's hands. So we've had a public hearing with Chris Gamache of the Trails Bureau from the state last winter. So that is, you know, was a little delayed due to the pandemic, but is scheduled to be done by November of this year. So hopefully that continues to go on schedule, things have been delayed a fair amount over the years. But we do have a commitment to have that completed this season before the snow hits. And we hope to stay on track for that, so that'll be a good community asset as well. And that'll connect the trail from the industrial park where it ends right now, all the way through to the Wind Road in Bethlehem. It'd be a nice downtown asset for the community as well.
I can just say one thing, I think John's downplaying his leadership on the, as part of these projects. And he's really played a big role in actually, you know, even the grant applications, being able to read them and help come up with good content and ideas for funding. So, you know, NCIC's a critical part, but, you know, thank you for your leadership there.
We have a whole commission that has been meeting regularly to tackle these projects, so it's been, it's been a great collaborative effort.
Thank you, John.
Any questions?
So the rail's being removed, is that done in three stages from what I'm understanding, or they do it in all at one shot?
I'd say that's a great question, I don't know the answer. It's getting down into, I think, like the means and methods of Chris Gamache and the Trails Bureau. They have a request for proposal process that they're going through, hopefully within the next couple of weeks. And initially, they were hoping to be able to do it through a more simpler contract process, but they have to put it out to bid, and after that, it'll go to governor and council for review. And so I think, I think what did we think it was, like mid-August is when they thought they'd potentially be able to award the contracts and have the work start? So, and then, you know, later on is really when, after the rail is removed, is when they're going to start redoing the surfaces with, you know, through the downtown River District area. It's going to be more of a, like a ledge pack, crushed stone, because it doesn't have as much dust. And then it'll go back to gravel, once they get outside of town. That's all I know.
My question, when you're working on the rail tracks, do you ever take any soil samples to see what's in the ground there? Because I grew up just above the railroad tracks in Lancaster, and we used to watch the trains go by, and the asphalt would get dropped on the sides of the tracks, and who knows what chemicals that's gone down these tracks. Now, in the winter, if it is in the snowmobile, you're not exposed to dust any day. But the way people drive these recreational vehicles, I mean, you see them come back, and they're covered from head to foot in the soot. I mean, that's the old word I can remember. And I just think in terms of respiratory diseases, that we should really be cautious, or err on the side of being cautious, and just take a look at what are people being exposed to on these rail tracks. And I've talked to other people who, they actually believe in use of oil because they say they're quite concerned about what they're inhaling.
Do you like me to feel that one?
Yeah.
So all of these projects, including the rail trail, are required to go through extensive environmental review. So that includes, the town will be responsible for, or like making the state is responsible for hiring a professional engineer who comes in and goes through that environmental review. It's far more than just a checklist saying, yes, no, yes, no. There's this site visit that is done by the engineer, the...
Section one oh six?
Yeah, it's the section one oh six review. So you've got historic properties, you've got endangered species, you look at the soils. You have to get signed from all of these different departments that say, yes, okay, there's going to be either no environmental impact or there's a cause for concern, and then you have to go through a remediation strategy, which is a long process, but it is done to be sure that it's safe and under our environmental hazard there.
I know, like just recently, extensive work has been done from Industrial Park Road through to Lisbon, and they've added pretty dense material, and I don't know if it's been treated with something, but I wrote on it before, and I wrote on it after, and there's, you know, minimal dust. It looks like just clean gravel on it now, but that will, they'll definitely be looked at like Caitlin was describing.
Thank you for explaining that.
Hey, John, how much is going to be the tax credit from the people that they got, you know? What's the tax credit that you talk about? What's the amount of the money?
It's around five hundred thousand dollars total.
Five hundred thousand?
Yep. So that's a voluntary program that businesses sign up for.
So the tax credit award coming from CDBG is five hundred and seventy-five thousand, but when it gets down to the grant, it's four hundred and sixty thousand. That would be coming to the community to do this project.
That's, that's, you put water limit together, it's five hundred thousand.
No, no, so the tax credits coming from CDBG are in the amount of five hundred and seventy-five thousand. So that's John's job to go out and sell five hundred and seventy-five thousand worth of tax credit to the businesses. And how the equation works is you get eighty percent of the tax credit, so that comes out of four hundred and sixty thousand, that would be the grand portion.
Yeah, we're talking about the same thing, I was just trying to simplify.
Yeah, no, just the one.
And Rudy, we can talk to you later about the donation that you might be considering for this project, so.
Any, any other questions for John? John, thank you for your leadership.
Yes, and this is really exciting for the community, I just wanted to keep it short and sweet, so.
That's great, thank you.
Because I know you know all about it, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, John.
So it is five forty-two, five forty-three, we can go ahead and close out the second portion of the public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close out the second portion.
No second?
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Want to do the third at the same time?
Well, yeah, it's supposed to be five forty-three, so we might as well. So I'll ask for a motion to close out the third public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
And I'll second.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All right, now I'll make a few more motions related to this. I'll make a motion to approve the submittal of the CDBG application.
Okay, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to adopt the updated housing and community development plan.
All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to adopt a residential anti-displacement and relocation assistance plan for the project.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye. And I'll make a motion to authorize Andrew Duscorsette, Littleton Town Manager, to submit the application and sign or execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the potential CDBG contract.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Good, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I want to go to record, I suggest that you guys, special new chair, to assign.
To assign?
To not, to not sign.
To not sign?
Yeah, I want to go record if you want. Thank you.
So Shaw's donation?
All right, so, um, see if I can make this go for your... The Dells Brook and stormwater retention areas surrounding the town-owned conserve lot budding Walmart and surrounding Dells Brook to the Ammanusick River requires constant beater, beaver lot, beaver maintenance, I'm sorry. The contracted beaver removal is required from time to time to keep the water flowing. An example of flooding this area can be seen in this drone footage here. Shaw's, which is actually new Albertson's LP, has offered a good gesture and thanks of our efforts and supporting them during the COVID issue. So they've offered to pay for the beaver mitigation efforts this year, so, yeah. Just asking how you accept.
So, so consider making a motion that the Board of Selectmen will accept and expend the donation of one thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars to be applied to expenses related to beaver mitigation efforts.
So moved. Second.
Second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, and next up, I'd like to introduce our new interim fire chief, Chief David Houghton. He's got a, in his background, he has a BS degree in fire science, an AS degree in fire science, and technology. And he's completed the local government management program with Suffolk University. David has a diverse background in firefighting, EMS, ALS, and BLS, which is advanced life support and basic life support, dispatch, fire prevention, emergency management operations, and he is a nationally certified firefighter, fire instructor, fire inspector, fire officer, and is a certified emergency medical technician, both in New Hampshire and at the national level. So Chief Houghton will be serving in this role part-time until the new Littleton Fire and Rescue Chief is appointed. Chief Houghton has coordinated with Chief Mercieri over the past month, and has now fully assumed his role. Houghton will be providing additional consulting services during his tenure. So I'm going to go ahead and introduce the new interim fire chief, David Houghton, to give us just an update on what's going on over there.
A lot. So I did spend the month of June, one day a week, coming up to Littleton, learning what I could about Littleton from the chief and me and the department members. I also, not always a fire chief in Massachusetts, I did thirty-eight years, but I've lived a house in New Hampshire in Walton Row for about twenty-eight years now, so I'm really familiar with New Hampshire's rules and regulations and whatnot. So it kind of made it a nice, nice easy transition for me to come up here and take the position over. I will say upfront, I've been to a lot of departments, I also worked out of the Fire Marshal's Office in Massachusetts. You guys have a lot to be proud of in this town, there is a great group of people that run your firefighting. These people are top-notch people. I have yet, and I've been here, I've survived two weeks so far, full-time with these people as well as that month before. And I have to tell you, this is a fantastic group of people who are looking for change. And in our meetings that we've already had, we had a department meeting last Thursday night, which was after a officers' meeting, which we did on Monday morning, so that we can learn what everybody is kind of thinking about. Everybody's on the same page, so I'm looking forward to helping, if not completing some of these projects, at least paving the path for the new permanent chief when he does come, he or she does come on board. And I've been promised, and I hope the town manager sticks with this, that by the time the snow flies, that will happen, because coming up through the notch does not throw me in the winter time, so I'll look forward to that. I am in the office, I did schedule, we do have a limited number of hours, so Mondays, Tuesdays, and Thursdays. And if Andrew would be okay with you, you can share my cell phone number with the board. I'm sorry, everybody, not everybody gets their cell phone number, but certainly with the board. I do welcome you guys to come down, if you want call, Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday, come down. I'd be glad to show you around, there's a lot of things that we have room for improvement on. I think it's really important that you come and physically see these things. We could talk about them, but sometimes seeing and put your hands on them just means that much more. On top of all of that, I think it would go a long way to showing the staff that's working there that there really is, people do care, and that you guys really will help us to help improve the equipment and the services that need to be delivered. And I got a really, probably the biggest project that I've seen, that I am still totally taken back on, is how quickly this entire ambulance service was put into, put into service. Every department that I've worked with or apparently worked for, the ambulance service has always been fire-based. I'm just amazed at how quickly you... I'm just amazed at how quickly you were able to put that in service and use it. And so far, the comments that I've heard from the public and people, it's just, these guys are doing a phenomenal job. They're still within one year, but you'd think they've been doing it for the last 10. So one of the tasks that I promised Andrew that I would do is we have a one-year anniversary coming up around September 1st, so we were running the ambulance service for one full year. We are going to do a complete evaluation of what was our first year like, not only looking at expenses, looking at things that worked really well, things that didn't work very well, and come up with a plan of action to make corrections. We know we can do better. They know they can do better, but they don't know what those things are. But having done this for 38 years, I can help them learn those things, so we're looking forward to it. Like I say, anybody, you're more than welcome to come down. Because we are still a secured facility and we're going to maintain that, there is a door button, but if we know you're coming down ahead of time, I'll make sure that I'm available. Love to have people come in and see what, see what we have.
Yeah, hi, welcome to Littleton. What are your future plans to inspect all department buildings?
So we now have the, there's so much work to be done, and I'm only here in a limited number of hours. The former fire chief is actually doing the inspections for me right now. So if you need an inspection done, please call the station. The entire staff knows that they'll take your information, they'll email Chief Mercieri as well as myself, so I can keep up to make sure things are getting done. We don't want inspections to fall between the cracks, so I physically am not going to have enough hours to do it, but we will get to it by using the phone.
So a point of clarification, if you're not notified, you don't inspect?
Yes, correct. Unless you have a project that's ongoing, or if you're required to have an inspection done for licensing. If it's something for licensing, and we received a lot of those calls in the last couple of weeks, then if you, if you're due for that licensing to be renewed, please call us and let us get ahold of you and get a schedule and to get that inspection done prior to you needing that certificate.
Thank you.
You are from?
Technically, I'm from Walton Row, which is a rich region.
Massachusetts.
Oh, I can't try. I'm an hours officer.
Do you live in the metro?
I live in the metro, I live in the metro, a little over there.
Over there, you're a metro driver.
You won't get really late from, wait, wait for late, I'm a bus driver, I'm sorry.
It's not as nice down there. Nobody gave you ideas, but.
No, no, this is big. If you don't mind, you know, on the 90-year, I would like to know what your salary is going to be.
Which, my what is it?
Your salary.
Yeah, we have a contract. Yeah, I can share, I can share a contract.
What, what kind of contract you got? A year, two years, five years?
You can get that.
Five months?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean.
Rudy, I'm sure if you contact Andrew, he'd be able to get that for you.
Everybody knows about the audience in 90-year, we hear.
I, I am not employed by the town of Littleton. I am not in the town, a little town Littleton employee. I'm working for a company called Municipal Resources. That is a company that is assisting the town in doing a search here with the fire chief.
You work for an agency.
So I work for them.
You work for an agency.
Correct. And they have placed me here for three to four months. The only way that would work is I had to be appointed as the fire chief, so I've been appointed as a fire chief, as an interim fire chief until I'm going to be shown a place.
The, the agency pays you with the mortgage and the tax pay, right?
You got me. I don't know how it works. I just know that.
You just, you just.
How that all works, I really have to, you guys, I'm, I'm.
And, excuse me.
Yeah, so we.
We're going to talk about that.
Yeah, we can, okay, yep, good.
All right, thank you very much.
Any other questions for our interim chief? Well, welcome.
Welcome. There was a question about it, if you want to. There was, at a previous meeting, there was a question about, you talked about the historic engine?
Yeah, the historic fire engine. I guess a question about the historic.
And so David looked into that to get some information on it.
So I was, I was asked to do some research to find out what's happening with, at one time, it's a 1931 American Le France fire truck. It's called Engine One. David claimed it per for some reason. That is still in town, but the question of who owns it, so who's responsible for it? So I was able to do some research and, if you don't mind, let me just give. One for Wilkens, so that is that, yeah. One for board members. This is the document that I was able to come up with that helped me figure out who the actual owner.
Eureka Host.
Eureka Host owns it, yep. So back on, April 28th, 2004, at a selectman's meeting, the select board at that time made a three to one, three to zero, excuse me, motion to transfer the ownership of that fire truck to the Eureka Host Company, which is a private organization. It is not, the only thing that I discovered the other day, I went down and visited the truck to see where it's currently located, is it did have municipal plates on it. I removed those plates. Those plates should not be on a privately-owned vehicle. The possession plates right now are in my possession. Other than that, the town has zero really responsibilities for that vehicle. The Host Company itself is working with the Historical Commission, by the looks of some of the records, to try and figure out restoration values, where it put it, and whether they should fully restore it or not. But there will be no fire department funds used on that vehicle at all. So I hope that answers people's questions on the ownerships.
Karen wants a question.
Karen, oh, okay.
I know you have a question, but I know in 2004, I was here. The, from Eureka Host Company was supposed to pay $1 for that vehicle.
Correct.
They, I went back and researched. I never thought that they paid the dollar for that vehicle. And the town is still insured.
That was one of the questions. We did not get to the bottom of the insurance part of it, but that's something that we have to clarify.
We'll take care of that.
And I, and honestly, I don't know if the dollar was paid or not, but if that's what it takes to make people happy, I'll pay the dollar tomorrow till the town. So there are no, I have no records that I could find about a bill of sale or anything like that. But the, the records from the selectmen do state what they were supposed to be doing with the vehicle and whatnot, so. Like I say, as far as I'm concerned, there are no department funds. It's not a department responsibility or a non-responsibility.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
I can just give you an update on the, yeah, so just an update on the chief's application. The chief's, fire chief's application has been released, meaning that it is now out in the advertising world. The job description was updated after a process that involved contacting many members of the community abroad, get a broad swath of, you know, what the fire department expectations were, what that, that position's expectations were. So applications will be received into mid-August, followed by a resume qualification, and candidates will be narrowed down to a handful for further review, which will involve essays, backgrounds, telephone interviews, and ultimately, an in-person interview. So I am forming a Littleton Fire Chief Citizen Review Panel for the purpose of providing my office with community-based input and feedback during the selection process. The group will provide active input during the process and participation in my final interview. It's an important decision, and I want to make sure that we have the fairest possible process resulting in the best possible person to drive the organization forward, so.
Good, thank you. The, do you want to roll right into the fire department EMS, fire department fire report?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. So let's see, the department EMS Fire Department Call Report, that's right. There was a question about an incident. So at the board meeting on 6/8/2020, Selectmen Anderson requested additional information regarding an incident in response by Littleton Fire and Rescue. There was a redacted incident report, which is in your meeting packet. It's on page four. And Chief, have you had a chance to review yourself with that one? There was a call on Main Street, at a Main Street.
Yeah, we had two EMS calls, two simultaneous.
Yes, yep. So Chief Houghton could answer questions if you had any further questions on that incident.
And that's on, on the call, was it the coffee pot?
That's correct, yes.
Just from the call that came in to what I'm understanding from the owner of the coffee pot, it's two different things from what I'm hearing. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of it and find out why the response was like it was.
So they had two simultaneous, they had a medical call that came in first, and they were responding to that call, and that was a, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it was a seizure of a juvenile. And so they weren't in the station when that call on Main Street, the coffee shop, came in. So the first ambulance was tending to that individual patient on the first call. One person in an engine by themselves was coming to the second call. Off-duty person, which I ended up, I believe ended up being the chief himself, came in to pick up the ambulance, to bring the ambulance down to transport that second person, which would be at the coffee shop. So because we had two calls going on at the same time, only three people on duty, they can only do what they could do with the staffing that they had.
But we were informed that they were administering, administering Narcan and that the patient, and CPR on the patient, and that's not the way it happened.
So the only thing I can tell you is, under the HIPAA laws, I'm not able to speak of treatment of individual patients at all. That's why you'll see some of the reports are redacted, because there's things that the federal law prevents us from, from explaining. What I would say is that if you have questions about a particular call, you can certainly come down. I can certainly look things up, but I have to be very careful what I say. I'm not sure that after reading both reports, that the facts that you have are correct. I can't tell you what the treatment was, what the patient's condition was, we're prohibited from doing that.
I guess we're just trying to get it under control, why the fire truck and ambulance are chasing each other all the time for little fender benders and, you know, the taxpayers are all going, what was that all about?
So because you have three people on duty and that's all, ultimately, if there were four people on duty, we wouldn't have this chasing around that's happening. But you have two people that by law have to be in the ambulance when the ambulance moves and transports patients. That leaves one person by themselves. That one person generally goes to the next, to whatever the call is with the ambulance, to assist them. Typically, it's four people. In Littleton, they're doing it with three, which to me is phenomenal, if they're able to accomplish all that they're trying to do with medical calls with three people. So that third person, that, that fire engine only has one person in it when it's going. We are looking at now, exploring not sending the engine because of the age and the condition of the engine, and looking at a potential smaller vehicle to do the same things with. But that's still in the working phase. I'm only week two into this, so I hope by the end of the month to be able to implement a different model. But we're waiting to find out whether we can, can put that into service and be able to utilize that. Because of the staffing levels, the reason that you're seeing two vehicles going, there's only three people on duty. Sometimes there are calls where that engine is just left at a call, at the scene, because they need all three people to transport. The patient's condition warrants two, two people in the back and one person to drive. That engine just sits there until off-duty people come in and pick it up. I've looked back over the last month, and it's happened about six times, so.
Yeah, I guess the concern is, is wearing out a half a million-dollar fire truck for some little thing that happens that you end up doing no transports or anything.
I 100% agree with you on wearing out the fire truck, especially, and I haven't done a thorough investigation yet, and I promised Andrew that I would do. I did 10 years as a department mechanic, so I will be going through these trucks. The age of these trucks and the condition of these trucks, I will 100% agree with you, we need to slow down running them, because they're not going to last. Those are not, remember, those trucks were not brand-new to Littleton. Those were trucks came to Littleton used. And they are, they are used. So we are looking at a model now. I've had some discussions with Andrew, I've had discussions with the officers, to be able to put a different, smaller vehicle in service. But I don't have those vehicles yet. We're still trying to work out logistics to figure out how we can get them and what we can do with them. But the goal is to stop running that engine for that reason. Same level, same number of people are going to have to go out the door, but hopefully in a smaller vehicle. That's the hope.
Looking forward to coming down.
Logistically, we can straighten all those things out. It's taking a little bit of work.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good.
Grant status overview.
So, yeah, just a quick grant status overview. You know, in large part to the partnerships of community and contract partnership with NCIC. We've had quite a bit of success for grants and projects over the past four or five years. And I don't know if you want me, I could just go over these really quickly and see the granting agency, the purpose and the amount, and where we're at. So the top section is projects that are currently active and awarded. We have EDA for the Amunucic Heron Act project. That was 1 million, just over a million dollars. Northern Borders Regional Commission Rail Trail Conversion, that's $110,000. New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for the Sub-Area 5 project. That equates to, through its loan forgiveness program, $292,500. The New Hampshire Taff Project Cottage and Mill Street Pedestrian, that one is $800,000. And I didn't put the match into these, but, you know, for example, the Taff Project has a $200,000 local match for an eight, for an $800,000 grant. The New Hampshire Recreation Trails Program, for that's for the rail trail conversion, that's $55,000. Northern Borders Regional Commission, again, industrial park expansion, that's actually a project that's moving forward right now. That was for $119,000, $119,500. That involves the 40-acre parcel that the voters approved to transfer to LIDC, and they're putting their roadway in, I think, starting next month, which will help developers have access to the law. Land Water Conservation Fund for the project that John just spoke about, the Riverfront Commons, for $200,000. The Neil and Louise Tillotson Fund for Opera House Sound System, that's for a sound system in this room, $20,000. EverSource for that same project, $5,000. Community Development Block Grant, Opera House Cottage Street Design for $12,000. That project is underway right now. That's the one that hired, paid for the architect to help begin redesigning the level below this one. And if anybody wants to look at what the condition of that level is right now, you know, I'd be happy to show you after the meeting. Let's see, Northern Borders Regional Commission Riverfront Commons, $250,000. Land Water Conservation Fund, Remick Park Upgrades, $200,000. And this is one where Chris Wilkins, Parks Director, was working with the, the community and community tax dollars on the playground project. And the taxpayers approved, I think it was $125,000. Chris was able to get other funds, including donations, and rather than just pull the trigger on finishing the, the playground, he working with NCIC, went after $200,000 to use the already raised funds to match projects that needed to be done at Remick Park. Remick Park has, the fields have some pretty bad drainage issues, which can get expensive to fix. There's a build, new building there, also the pathway needed some improvement, so that's been awarded, and I think the playground portion of the project is supposed to start, I think, next month, so. The New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Fund, that's for the asset management plan, Phase 2. So this is a project that we've been working on for several years with Dufrane Group Engineers. And Doug can correct me if I'm wrong about any of it, but a lot of it was being able to study and document, and Caitlin too, she's really familiar with these applications, but all the lateral assets of our, our stormwater and wastewater collection. So that involves traditionally what, what would happen, and is this one for the wastewater treatment plant or the asset lateral asset, do you remember?
Honestly, I brought your ass to the mic.
Okay, so.
Sorry.
So we have, we have two with, with the, on the, one for the wastewater collection system and one for the wastewater treatment plant. So with the wastewater collection system, we have actual paper cards back at the, at the highway garage. And so if we get a report of a sewer break, somebody has to come in, they actually go back to the highway garage, they flip through the cards, try to figure out where that break is. They can find a card that has information handwritten about, you know, this, this manhole was put in in 1938, and it was made of brick with a, you know, iron top. And it's this many feet deep and this deep wide. They can then get the tools they think they need and go out. Well, with the new system that we have, we have a GPS-activated map, the, our same GIS mapping system that we have with Cartographics. It also includes layers of infrastructure, and so when there's a call for a break, they can actually show up at the scene and pull the cards up while they're at the scene with actual images, all of the, all the, all the information's being updated. It's almost complete. And the other one that's at the wastewater collection system, which this one could be too, I'm, I'm not exactly sure. The wastewater collection system is in the process of having a capital improvement plan developed. The, the, our system, which is timely, because we actually just, and I, I think I have some notes on it. Our permit through EPA, which is called a, Doug?
NPBS?
Yeah, NPBS permit, is, is expiring this month. And so they've issued us a draft one, but we're working with a consultant to push back on some of the limits that they've required, so. So the plant itself will eventually be maxing at some of the capacities that it has. In the CIP plan, we can actually look at full, full growth build-out based on the master plan and the zoning bylaws in the community, and where we think the community will grow, and then actually allocate future growth. So the, and the CIP plan will help show us what we have to do to get there. So also what we have here is the U.S. Department of Agriculture Opera House Lighting, that's one we were just notified about last week, $23,230. So the project that's inside of this room, and Susan's been working really hard on this, Doug's been working hard on this one for a while, the sound system and the lighting, they have to be built on a rigging system. So if you were to look behind here, there's essentially a rigging system, which is a series of pipes. So this grant is going to help us with the lighting and the rigging portion, which we have some town funds already to match, and also the sound system. This project went out to bid last week, I believe, if I'm correct, or the week before. We've got New Hampshire Clean Water State Revolving Loan Fund for Partridge Lake Bosfate, that's one the voters approved, it's 100% loan forgiveness. The, those who live on the lake have also offered potential to cover any administrative costs up to $10,000 for that project. That one's well underway. There's been a committee reviewing all of the, through the whole process, developing the RFP and actually reviewing the engineers who proposed, and I believe they've already selected an engineer and have begun working, working for that one. And then what we just heard a little bit about, let's see, New Hampshire, oh, Main Street Phase Two. So this one has already been committed, it's through the New Hampshire Department of Transportation, and it's less a grant and more of a budget item that exists in their budget maintenance, and this money is specifically set aside to redesign the intersection with Saranac Street and Meadow Street and Bridge Street and Meadow Street to make sure that it meets state specs. So we have, and I may have missed something, but Caitlin, I don't know, I'm sure there's a few, we've also been, we've also retired quite a few grants, you know, different, different ones for Sub Area Five, the other Transportation Alternative Program grant for, in front of Lakeway, I think there's probably been a few others. So also, we have a number of pending applications. So we have a Federal Emergency Management COVID Disaster Recovery, that's kind of an ongoing one, we've submitted some information, and I think we have to do it monthly, is that different, is it the CARES Act? Karen?
Between the CARES Act, the Gopher Grant, which has to do with COVID, and FEMA COVID Grant, has a total of about $430,000 that we are trying to get.
Right.
And for, we've actually been committed to, but we haven't got the funds yet. We do have a Star Rock.
Hmm, and I think that reminds me, we did miss one, which was the FEMA grant for Broomstick?
Broomstick?
Broomstick Hill Road, which is, we estimate, is it 100?
148,000.
Forty-eight thousand, and that one is already awarded.
And that's winding down for?
Yeah. And so if you take a ride up Broomstick, there has been some recent storm damage, but there's been quite a bit of ditching, you know, they're restricted based on a lot of ledge up there, but and a lot of, yes, so that project is underway.
Looks good up there, will those up there this weekend?
Karen, on the funding for the CARES, Gopher, and FEMA, is there an end date to that, or is it like a continued?
There is an end date, it's hard for that grant. There's an end date for the Gopher, which is August 31st.
Yeah.
There's an end date for FEMA Park, which is December 31st.
Okay.
And then the first responders has a grant that ended this week.
Good, thank you.
So other applications that we have in process include Land Water Conservation Fund, a grant for the pool and building replacement. And I have 200 to 400,000, because I think there's potential, but we just have to make sure we would have match to go for $400,000 for that project. We have another Land Water Conservation Fund application, that's a supplemental application for the Riverfront Commons, and so that would potentially add another $200,000 to the Riverfront Commons project. We have a Economic Development Authority, EDA, for Main Street Phase Two, I think we're going to have public hearings on that one next select court meeting, is that correct? We require those before application, public hearings, yeah. So, and that'll be for $2 million?
Approximately.
Approximately. And then a Community Development Block Grant, Main Street Phase Two, that was the one we talked about tonight, and that one's for $500,000. And there could be a few, like I said, there could be a few that I've missed on here, I've already noted, I think, three, so. And that is the grant update, and I don't know if you want to entertain any questions on any of those projects.
Good, and thank you for your hard work on that too, Andrew.
And Caitlin for helping with the applications and Mike and helping with those projects too.
Other questions, comments? Okay?
I have a few Grafton County updates, let's see, get over there. So Grafton County has now created a Grafton County Broadband Committee to look at broadband in Grafton County, I think more so up here in the North Country and around the Lakes region. They have appointed me to the board, and if you look at some of the communities, it looks like they've appointed people from communities where, you know, there, there's some broadband issues. It'll be interesting to take a look at. I know North Country Council has done a broadband survey years ago, and recently, I think Michelle Morin Gray had looked at it again, and we found that there was some inconsistency with what the telecommunications companies were saying was available for broadband versus what people who took part in the survey actually said, so we're going to work on that. At an earlier meeting, you directed me to send a letter to the Grafton County Commissioners asking them for some potential relief from their growing budget. We were looking at an increase there. I met with the chairman, Lindy Lauer, and the commissioner, and she informed me that while they couldn't make any changes to the tax relief, one thing that they did do as a result was they looked at the formula that they used for dispatch. Littleton was paying a pretty large share of the dispatch fees. The formula will result in about a $60,000 a year reduction in our dispatch fees, and I think that just based on the, because we're on a calendar year, they're not, we're looking at 20 to 30 grand of savings this year. Is that right, Karen? And that's my Grafton County update.
Do you want to, can we jump back and go over the tourist-oriented directional signs?
Yes, yes, so this is something that's come up in the past. So I've contacted New Hampshire Department of Transportation and the New Hampshire Department of Transportation's private contractor, they, they have a private contractor actually manage the program. I put an example of the, some of the blue signs up here. And so if you're driving on the interstate, you know, this, this, you'll see it on I-93, state routes, and I'm saying that they could be increasingly utilized by businesses to direct additional traffic into the Littleton market. The program for Littleton's, we have four exits, and we have major state intersections, and it, I think it's severely underutilized by local businesses, and I think it's, a lot of them just don't know about it. So I've relayed some of the information just onto the group that we recently met with, the Abthorpe Group, and I know that some of them have already been in contact with the state, so they can start to look into it. But I think that it's something that we really should try to figure out how we can focus on it more, the Chamber or some other group might really be the one to take the, take the, you know, yeah.
Are those the, the big blue signs that say attractions?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and there's nothing on them?
Very, there's very few. I think there might be one or two for Exit 42.
Okay.
Yeah, so if you're on the interstate, and we have a lot of travelers, not right now, but who are coming from maybe to Quebec down to Maine, and, you know, a lot of people will make it, make a decision to get off of an exit based on food or attractions that are listed there, so. Yeah, if you want more information, you know, I'll also try to put something out on the website, but I think we really should find a, you know, some, a group that could really take that and run with it, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Chairman.
I have a suggestion, you know, see, I don't know if you guys have been Exit 43, I-91, Exit 43, they got just one sign, attraction. You know what's the last sign now? Littleton Hospital, go check it out. This is an attraction, man. Go check it out. It's a draw. Next is 43, go ahead. Baby thing, it's an attraction, baby. Littleton Hospital. I really suggest you guys go over there, take them out.
I think Urgent Care has put a sign on that too.
Yes.
It's kind of, you know, it's an attraction, go ahead.
It depends on who, what's going on, it might be.
Yeah.
Yeah, it'd be very attractive if you were injured, so.
Yeah, but that's.
And Madam Chairman's talked about the high-hazard program? Yeah. So Dell's Dam in Dell's Park is on the red list of dams. We recently applied for a high-hazard potential dam grant program, so just an update on that, the grant has been denied, but that doesn't mean we're going to stop working towards trying to find a solution. We plan to bring the issue to the Conservation Commission for review and see about working with them to move forward on options. I know that on the Conservation Commission itself, there's different opinions about what should be done. I think at least one of the members has approached me saying, why not rip it out and make it open for, you know, fish or whatever, bring it back to a natural? And then someone else says, well, it should really be preserved, it's a community asset and, you know, just part of the overall cultural history of the area.
Still like you to put me in touch with the guy that red-flagged that dam?
Yeah, we can get you copies of the Bureau of Dams. Yeah. I'll give you that.
You'll keep us updated on that?
Yes, yeah. And then next up, John's talked about it, I think Caitlin's also mentioned it. So we are selling tax credits, we have, I think, around 200,000. So Littleton received official notice last month of $575,000 in tax credits, $460,000 resulting grant. The CDFA tax credits are towards the Riverfront Commons project. I have a list of, a New Hampshire list of awards, and Littleton's looks like it's, I think, maybe the second largest, so we're really lucky to be able to have that access to these funds. Because the funding, Littleton will now be able to accomplish the first two phases of the project. Both phases are approximately $1.6 million. The funding plan includes 250,000 Northern Borders Grant, 200,000 Land Water Conservation, 55,000 Rail Trail, 175,000 Town Appropriation, and I guess I should have included this on my list, 155,000 in individual private donations, I think thanks to John and the River District Commission for getting those, and now the 575,000 CDFA, which is a 460 grant. So really, this credit can be used against business profits tax, business enterprise tax, and insurance premium. The town is responsible for selling the tax credits. Greg Eastman, John, and I are working with businesses for commitments, and as of today, we have over $200,000 in verbal commitments from Five Guys Burgers and Fries, Littleton Chevy, CAI Technologies, Eastern States Compounding Pharmacy, Union Bank, Woodsville Bank Guarantee Savings Bank, and PBD and Smith Realty. And we have a lot of calls out, but if anyone has a business and is interested in these tax credits, definitely give one of us a call, and we'll, we'll get more information out.
Did you want to say anything more about Main Street Phase Two?
Just, you know, we are looking for businesses letters of support, so if you're, if you, if you or somebody has a business in this area that will potentially benefit from it, please get in touch with us, we'll probably be in touch with you anyways. But that's really, that's really all I had to add to that one. And like I mentioned before, one other topic is the, the Federal EPA National Pollute Discharge Elimination System Permit. So Littleton's EPA NPDES permit expires this month, EPA has issued a draft permit with increased monitoring and narrowing limits. The open comment period is underway, DPW Director and our contracted wastewater engineer, KB Partners are coordinating responses and requests to regulators, and I've attached a report, and if anybody would like to have a copy of that, the report basically outlines some of the increased requirements for our testing. And there are costs associated with all of those, so. And then just also one other thing, just to mention, the new superintendent of schools, Dr. William Hart, so we met last week, and really feel optimistic about future collaboration. He wants to look at having students get involved more with the community, with community development and solving community problems, so it looks like it'll be a, a good, good mix there. And that's all I have.
Great. So Andrew, we didn't have anything on old business, under new business, we have the July Citizen of the Month, and we will do, I will read what we, who we chose, and also we will be doing a photo opportunity for this gentleman. So it's, and before I share this too, I would encourage any of you, if you know of somebody that gives a kind of fly under the radar, they may do, they may give to the town of Littleton, we would certainly want to consider them for the Citizen Certificate of Appreciation for the Citizen of the Month. We would really appreciate that. So this one goes to Andrew Peter Clark. Since 1990, Peter has picked up roadside trash every year, and this person was given to us by Brian Patna, who is the manager of the transfer station here in Littleton. So he wanted to make sure that we at least considered Peter. "Peter has picked up roadside trash every year, first in his neighborhood, then to streets and roads in our community. This year, he picked up more roadside trash by himself than the entire town did on Greenup Day. He collected nearly 75 bags weighing over 800 pounds of roadside trash. Peter is an individual that quietly goes about volunteering and performing multiple acts of kindness without wanting recognition. He can often be seen helping senior citizens, he checks in on them, goes to the store for them, and genuinely cares about their well-being. Peter is a humble and unassuming man who wants to be the best for everyone he meets and our community. Littleton is fortunate to have Andrew Peter Clark as a resident." So we will be presenting the Certificate of Appreciation to Peter sometime this month. Okay, so Abthorpe District is next.
So we talked about this briefly at a previous meeting, residents and businesses, owners, business owners in the Abthorpe area have approached the town fairly often and inquired about increased awareness and attention to this area of the community. Recently, Herb and Joe Lahoot have offered to assist in bringing together a group of interested businesses and residents to discuss their concerns. On June 17th, we hosted an Abthorpe meeting at the Opera House. The meeting was well-attended, and participants, participants were in agreement that more coordination and organization would be beneficial to the community attention and project development in this area. Some of the topics that were brought forward were business signage and I-93 blue sign program, which reminded me of the, the other program, complete streets, which is traffic calming, street trees, pedestrian lighting, like the River District and Main Street, and green separated sidewalks, more access points to the rail trail. There were traffic concerns talked about, Washington Street being used as a cutoff, Reddington and Union Street intersection. They also talked about creating uniform wayfinding signage. They talked about branding, marketing, and promotion of Abthorpe. Reopening basketball courts was also a topic, river access to Three Mile Bridge, which I don't think is the actual name, it's just how far out it is on the rail trail, and then allowing the use of segways and e-bikes on areas like the rail trail. Connecting parks with looped paths and trails, and also consideration for going for a planned New Hampshire Design Charette for Union Street. So it was suggested that the board, the group request that the Board of Selectmen consider creating a focus group similar to the River District Redevelopment Commission. Those present were supportive of the concept and plan to relay this concept to the board, and if created, the board would seek those who would be interested to submit letters of interest to serve on the commission for consideration of future appointment. And so there are members here, I don't know if maybe anybody wants to add anything to that?
I kind of like to say, like you said about blue signs, that none of us qualify for them.
Hmm.
Yep.
The future segue business would?
Only at last month.
Oh.
It's our first call.
Okay.
There, when I went to town, like Abthor Commons, most places, not one sign showing where it is, nothing on the building, zero. I don't know if Fourteenth or Corner where Jean used to be, without these, I don't know. But they, like, I'm going to see today, they have a nice ground sign saying, what's down there? Abthor Commons. Each business that's down there can buy this, buy these sign. It's just when you come down, if you're a tourist, you have to know where you want to go. Like, send, you get the email of, oh, here, there were a cross, something like that. Chris said, you know, they got back to them on how we take it forward, because they're going to be removed if we don't.
Right. Yeah, so they had, so the group has a lot of good ideas like these. And the River District Commission's been such a success to really get people who are interested, funneled in and focused in accomplishing things that it seemed like this, this area could really use a similar attention.
So tonight, what we want to do is make a motion to form an Abthor District Commission. And I think there's enough in the group that would, we could appoint, to submit.
Should we just see? I was at the meeting, I thought it was a really good meeting, and I really like the idea of our committee. Should we set the number of committee members? Or is that something that's done? I'm just trying to remember, I think when we did the River District. John, do you remember that? I think, did we set it at 11 or 12 or something like that? And one person from the chamber, one person from here?
Yeah, we had 10 original members, and then it was up to, it was up to 12 at one point. So the select board, each year, we'll hear a process of taking volunteers and appointing people to stagger three-year terms to make sure that we had fresh ideas.
I don't know what you guys thought around numbers or anything like that?
Well, does 11 to 10?
How many businesses did we say that were up that end of town that we?
The last time we counted, it was, and this was a few years ago, there was between 62 and 65 businesses. Once you rounded the corner, up to just a little past, I think, we'll, we'll go right to that point, so.
Seems like, you know, 10 or 11 is a good number because you've got that odd number.
Yeah, I've always liked the odd numbers on it.
Like the 11 or something. How many people do you feel you need for? Any ideas?
I would think anything more than 11.
That's about it?
And then I guess the next question would be, should, we should probably have them on a rotating basis, similar to all our other commissions?
Yeah.
Like three-year stagger?
Yeah, three-year stagger, if we figure it out.
Okay.
I'll make that motion to create the Abthor, what do they call it?
District.
District Commission comprised of 11 community members.
And I'll second.
Okay, do we want to include in there staggered for three-year terms?
With staggered, three-year terms.
Okay.
Staggered, yeah.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Good.
So Andrew, next step, will be accepting nomination, or self-nominations or nominations?
Yep. And then we'll figure out how to stagger the terms and let you appoint those into them.
Awesome. And people can submit self-nominations to the town office, to you, to Seal? How would you like that done?
Yeah, it'd be great to submit them right to Seal. And then you could probably use, which preferred email, probably even Selectman email? Would that be the best one? It doesn't matter, or Seal's email? We'll, we'll publish it.
Yeah, there'll be a notice.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, so next point of discussion is the Littleton Parks and Rec MOU.
I don't see Chris here, but I'll just go over it real quick. So for several years, the SAU and the town have been meeting with, we've been meeting with the SAU to explore shared use of facilities between town and schools. Littleton Parks and Recreation lacks a facility to host its after-school and its summer programs. And Littleton Schools, as an organization, lack the facilities of athletic fields and outdoor courts. So costs and use for these organizationally separate entities had been unresolved issue. I mean, you can remember in the budget season, and there was always a payment involved. So Parks Director Chris Wilkins worked closely with the SAU. He took it on himself to try to get to a resolution. And they were able to establish operational expectations that resulted in a no-cost MOU. So there won't be any requirement to have, you know, be expecting a payment from the school or vice versa for the town. And so the Parks Commissioners have, now, they've all signed in and gone forward with it, so. It's in place.
So you're not looking for anything that's just?
Yeah, just really to let you know, it's been such a topic, at the budget, everything from the Budget Committee to here, that I think it gives an update that has finally been resolved, so. Yeah, and maybe just make sure the record shows so that in 20 years, when they're looking to find out, you know, how it works. I mean, we, I think Karen will remember, we went back quite a few years to figure out the original motion that did the first one and the payments that were involved, so.
We'll give Chris a big shout-out. Okay, this, nothing as far as board assessors. So as far as other business, Budget Committee appointment, we have John Goodrich to appoint to the Budget Committee.
So moved?
Okay. John Goodrich worked for Weidman for, I don't have his bio in front of me, but he has since moved back to Littleton.
Okay.
And would like to be a part of the Budget Committee. His family has roots here, his, his brother was taken along here.
Even after we did the community appointments, there's still a few places left on the Budget Committee that were open.
So, yeah, you made a motion, you seconded.
Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. We'll let John know.
I knew that was coming up.
I guess any?
Don't know what it is.
I got something to say about this appointment with the Board of Committee. I just want to tell you, you guys, you guys want to go with the races? I am the individual, and I'm the black, you know what I mean, okay? Races is going to start to be the main subject for you three. Now, let me call your names, you three guys, okay? You got a few secretary on the day. I was the first one to send seven letters. A department manager wants to, I don't know, to speak up now, that's basically. I sent seven letters of intent. And then in open, that will work. You guys can know, you know why, to rent me back, for whatever reason. You guys want to talk about races? You guys want to be a racist? You got the right guy, because I'm going to make you three guys really good pictures. You can be a racist in this town. In this town, we are all equal. I got a gift to speak up with anybody. And you guys don't like that. Especially you. I told you Ross was worse than you. I think Ross was no better. But you, that I always consider, you know, a fair guy. What I'm going to do, my three letters in there, what do you do?
Never sorry.
You're putting it better off, you wipe it, why? You're throwing away, why?
Never sorry.
No, so. Seven letters in there, you're who the job. Everybody wants me in the committee, everybody in town, except you three guys. I don't know the town manager, I don't know, he stays away. You guys are going to be a racist? You got the right guy, because it started tomorrow. I know what to do with you three guys. And I'm going to go no court. I can speak for my own. Seven letters in there, you are the only 22 hoping. And no need to one letter, you guys no reply, no need on one letter. Do you feel good about? Did you watch yourself in the mirror when you go home? You guys are racist, you know, in New York, Oceano, Washington. You guys are bunch of racists. You are racist. I don't know for what. And I respect all of them. When I see a guy, everybody, I see God, stuff like that. And you guys can know whatever, to send me a reply, a seven letters of intent? And you, you still are hoping. No, this is doesn't going to work. And like I told you, I don't go to court, I'm not going to give my money to attorney. I just to tell you who you are, who you are, and you are. And I'm not afraid, I can tell it right to my face. You guys are bunch of racists. You should be ashamed of yourself, not just for me, for the people all the time. Because they like me, they respect me. When they not proud of, they not call you, you, and you, they call Rudy. And the town manager knows all about. You tried to kill me? That's racist? Why? In what time? 5, 3,000 people? And I'm a big considering, you know, the, you know, the guy, for what? Because the guy's got trouble, he comes to me, and I go to the town manager, and say, look, that guy over there cannot pay taxes. What are you can do about? I'm bad? I'm not bad. I respect all of them. I respect all you guys. And I respect everybody. But seven letters in intent, and you know, you don't need to consider me. For what? Why don't you tell me? You the chair, why don't you tell me? In my face, say Rudy, you are not. Why don't you tell me?
Rudy.
Why I don't be considered?
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you for sharing.
We do.
I want to share it to you, a lot of stuff. You guys are bad, you guys are racist, you guys should be, you know, should go home. You just watch yourself in the mirror, and then just match the mirror because you guys know yourself, you know. And that's no longer yet, no worry about it. I take care of you three stooges.
Mr. Greenlaw, you have been sitting there, did you?
Seven letters in intent.
Did you have anything you wanted to share, or? Did you have anything you wanted to share? I know you brought some papers, or were you just visiting tonight, or?
I'm here.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you, thank you, appreciate that.
I haven't taken a nap, yes.
Okay. Thank you. So I guess we're going to be going into non-public, this ends the public hearing?
I think there's a few more things, wasn't there, on the new business? No?
No, I think that was it. I think that was it. We had Citizen of the Month, the Abthor District Discussion, and?
Citizens Concerns are.
Do you want to go over some citizens concerned?
I think there was some people here to talk around citizens concerned, yes.
All right. Okay. Thank you.
I'm Peggy Hard, live in Littleton. Andy from the school, yeah. I live on Far Hill. I've been a lifelong resident of Littleton and two homeowner on Far Hill. I could live at the bottom, and now I live far away up the hill. It's been mentioned over the years about the condition of the road. I have acquired a number of signatures because of the condition of the road. We have, I was told by Andrew, her message on my phone, and I was never able to complete a call with him about the monies being set aside for the road. Once again, I don't know, I don't know a lot about this, so what they said, I'm just learning. And something just needs to be done. I don't know what's happening. He said something about engineers, but I didn't, like I said, I didn't have a full conversation, so. I have acquired signatures. Maintenance concerns are, you know, the safety of the road. Most, he said something about from Fox Ridge up. And I have been up that road multiple times, even just past me. I haven't had a lot of time to prepare for this, so. I did take some pictures, but those four people, it's just horrendous. I really advise, I would suggest that new people go up this road. It's, it's just horrible. And I, for instance, I had a lady friend of mine that may have to call the ambulance, and they went past Fox Ridge. And ambulance folks were actually apologizing to her because of the ride in the ambulance was so horrible. And even the fireman said that the road, that was a horrendous road. My four UBS guys, they had the last bump, and half his package is on the floor. You know, it's just, we have no signage, we have no speed limit signs, we have no blind drive signs. I owned a vehicle for two and a half years. At the two-year mark, I had to have a strut put in my car. Multiple people have had replacements of leaf springs and such because of that, of the road emissions. I did go to the town office of the road earlier last year, and I asked them, could you just please fix the deep cracks? Fill them, do something. It is horrible. So two weeks later, they went out, they filled three or four large cracks across the road that, we have log trucks, we have all kinds of very large vehicles walking down that road, so, you know, it's been just torn apart. So they, they filled three of the large cracks going across the road. The cracks going up the road are very wide, they're about, some are at least four inches wide. And one of the guys that lives on, that I have a signature, lives on Fox Ridge, he rides a motorcycle. And he's like, I'm a, he got his wheel caught in one of those just this year, and he said he almost lost it. The kids that start at the top of the hill by Mr. Bailey's, like I said, I'm a four-90, so I'm just far away at the road. And they, it's a blur when they go by our road. I mean, people holler for them to slow down, but there's just nothing, there's no signage, there's absolutely nothing. 90% of the people complained about the taxes and how much they pay, and how much they go up, and nothing gets done. And, and I understand it's supposed to be on the docket for the summer. It's happening through July. I don't know if I've seen any additional post with pink tape or not, because I don't live up on that part of the road. Once again, I've done multiple trips up just recently. I have taken a bunch of pictures. I didn't have time to get them printed, but I do have, you know, on my camera. It's just, I don't know. I don't know, maybe, Andrew, you can tell me more about what you were going to say, but.
Yep.
We were told three years ago that this was our year. And COVID, I know, sets things back, I understand all that, but, gosh, just something, anything.
So, yeah, the, and I apologize that you live on such a tough road. That road was part of the road plan for this year, that was approved at town meeting. The road is set to go out to bid, I believe, next week. So that's for construction for this year. And it is, I think, the most significant project as, of the road projects this year that were approved at town meeting. So, yeah, we expect to have that road reconstructed this year.
Granted, the, you know, from Fox Ridge up, I think is, I call it a cowardice, because it's really, it's busted up. The asphalt is so broken up, you know, dirt the road. Somebody, one of the ladies had to hire someone to come in and shovel some dirt out in front of her house because they don't even, they don't even sweep it, you know? I mean, it's just.
You don't, yeah, if you sweep it, it'll go away. But I would say.
I mean, they went, I understood, they went from the street sweeper, which has low clearance, and, you know, we have the road ban in spring, and they, you know, and it was just soft, and, you know, they said if they get stuck it. And I, once again, I understand that. But it's just, you know, I know, if you go fix the top part, that's all well and good, but do something. But that first, you know, when you walk the road, that first little, truly, I just want you to walk that road. It's just, even if you go right to the side, you just can't escape it.
Yep, yes, I won't disagree, it's a terrible road. And I would say we're, we're doing, and it is slated for, for repair this year. And I'll, I'll say there are a lot of bad roads in town, and I And I think it's part of the problem is that over the years, the budget has been cut. Um, there used to be a ten-year road plan. Um, but I think unfortunately, uh, you know, the town was put in a hard position and the, the plan just didn't get followed. Um, I think the good thing is now we're on a path to start long-range planning. The long-range planning efforts help keep the taxes down because if you do a pavement management plan, you know, those cracks that are four inches, when they're one inch or less, uh, in a pavement management plan, you can come out and you can seal them and you can get another three years or more.
And they do them periodically, but this is last year. I have everything, but it wouldn't be gone.
So, you know, really, once they're over one inch, if they're two inches, I mean, if they're over that, then you're to the point where the road, you can't just patch it up anymore. I think unfortunately, we have quite a few roads in town that, that are just in such bad repair that there's nothing you can do but, um, uh, complete replacement. So right now, we're in a process of developing a new, uh, road management plan, um, but then also pavement management plan. And as part of that, you know, we're, we're triaging. So, you know, we're, we're gonna try and take care of, like, for example, your road this year and then other roads that can still be saved. And the investment can be made to last longer for minimal investment through a cracked ceiling or a thin shim coat. We're doing those too. But what we'll have eventually is a plan that where we don't end up in a situation like this. We'll know what we're doing for the next ten years and we'll know that we need a standard amount to go into a, a area to take care of it. But, um, your road is, is set to be taken care of this year. The, the contractor will hopefully be selected, I would think, within the next several weeks, so.
But now Far Hill starts at West Main Street.
So I'm not the one who said it starts at Fox Lane, so I don't know where that came from. But the entire scope, I would say, we'd be, we would need Doug Dampco. He just left for his kid's birthday party, but otherwise he would have been here to answer that. But, um.
But I mean, it starts at West Main Street.
Mm-hmm.
And once again, if you go up to the hill, you know, there's once again, a crack across the road that, Miami Park. And so is it, does it be mean from West Main Street to the top or, I mean?
You know, and I would have to defer to Doug, who isn't here. But we could, you know, what we could do is have a conversation on it. Um, you know, we, you could even take a look at the RFP documents you want. The RFP is a request for proposals, requesting contractors submit a bid in. So we could try to get you a copy of that if you like, um, this week, you know.
Right, so are they gonna, are they gonna like grind it? I mean, I know there's a lot of ledge up there. My husband has actually taken and dug out the size of the road so that the water doesn't run into the road in the winter and that sort of thing on its own because it's just treacherous. So I know there's ledge, so I don't know if they're gonna grind it? Are they gonna rip it all up? You know, I've lived on the road for twenty years or more and.
Right. So some places, like they don't have ledge, for example, we can do what's called like a full box out. That's where you dig it up, you create a new box. Like if you were to look at the ground from sideways, you know, you could put in good, good drainage and then soils and a geotex fabric. And all that makes water and everything just go down somewhere else. And then the pavement itself sits on top and, you know, maybe deflects a little bit, but, but usually if you have, you do a full box out. That's the most expensive process to do. Like you said, I think your road has a good amount of ledge and some drainage issues and ditching issues. Um, and I think they're planning to try to resolve, um, like spot-wise where the major, you know, heaving is. And it'll probably, a lot of grinding. Find, find a car without struts and take them. Yeah. But we'll, we're gonna try to take care of all that this year and, um, we'll be in touch more. Yeah.
And Andrew, how's your contact information?
Yeah, he has my phone number.
Yeah.
And I'm 490 for Elk. And we all on the lead, so.
I knew your name. I said I knew your name from our back and forth.
I'll pay you, I'll pay you, so.
Okay.
Yep. Well, I'll be waiting.
Thank you, Peggy.
All right.
Thank you for your patience.
Yep.
And I just got an update. RFP is released on Fri- this Friday, so.
What'd you say?
The, the RFP will be released this Friday.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Oh, so that's, that'll be the request for contractors to submit bids. Yep.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
It's moving forward.
So I guess, any other concerns?
Uh, excuse me. I have a little concern about the people in Little Town. Everybody talks about what's going on right now with the court and part of the chief, okay? The point is this, that as a good job, and I know it does a good job, the town manager does for the people of Little Town. Everybody, you know, and believe in me, it's a lot of people. I don't know, major men and stuff like that. They wanna know why somebody that doesn't work is getting a full salary. We don't respect poor people, so I respect them as a chief. They wanna know why you guys desire, want to treat poor, desire to give money, pay when he doesn't work. He doesn't work, he stays home and has, you know, brown hair or that, and we gotta pay the salary. Why? Because you guys decide that with the tax pay money? Thank you very much, that's nice. People wanna know that. Hey, knows about people wanna know that. He knows. Do you mind if probably, you know, it's on the camera, if it's somebody watches that, you know? He's got an answer from, you know, the people, the officers, the town. Why you gotta pay this guy with all his debt, a full amount of money when he stays home and he doesn't do the job? I understand that to get paid with the tax money, you gotta work. Like he does, like, not you, but everyone. You know, it's a lot of people want to get paid. The people in town wanna know why this guy get full amount, full amount. It's not like ten percent, one percent. Or the salary, because the tree salesman, a good town manager decided that, that's the law. We gotta pay him. Do you mind if you, you know, I'm, you know, I, I respect the voice of men in this world. You know, why?
And so, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll just, just, Rudy, I, I will say that we are very limited on what we can say in any particular case. Um, I will say that the chief was put on paid administrative leave. And I'll say that, you know, as far as his status as, um, on leave or not, there'll be an update to that, I'd say, in the very near future. So stay tuned.
How long?
Soon, very soon.
We gotta get the money from the tax pay, for how long?
Yeah.
A year, two year, three years, five years? You know the court is close now, right? You know, the judge, they went on vacation. They're not taking our cases. You know that. How long?
We do appreciate, Rudy, your, um, your, your camp.
It's what they say in town, what they say in many other states.
Right.
They know that.
No, we appreciate that, but we are very limited. And I, and I think we just need to leave it at that. Okay? Thank you and thank you for respecting me.
It's all right. At least I got an answer. Yeah, but the chair of the salesman said, no worry about it. Right? But, you're the chair, right?
Correct.
You're on the show, right?
Well, I don't know about that.
You're wrong, you're not there, listen to me. You did, you're on the show. But you're more wrong than that. I am, I'm, thank you.
So any, no, I already asked Mr. Greenlaw.
I'm sorry. I need a lot of network for signatures.
Okay.
Yeah, I just, I know this is done before, but I just wanna give you this and.
Sure.
Ignore the talk because I know it's already gone too hard for say.
Okay.
But I just wanted to, you know, give you the signatures.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
So this concludes our public.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public, um, meeting by RSA ninety-one dash A colon three comma two A. Chad Sterns.
Okay.
Why is my visitor coming on the, on?
Oh, no.
I'm just, I'm just a resident, I'll be on the.
I think he missed it when we were asking him.
Oh, okay. I apologize that, for that, Sam. Earlier, earlier I asked you if you had something you wanted to share.
Oh, with what somebody was saying?
No, 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 if you had something that you wanted to bring before us.
But I mean, this is an emotional surprise, it's no sound.
Okay. All right, so go ahead. Yeah, no, that's okay.
Okay.
That's all right. I apologize for that. I'll take responsibility.
Maybe that's what it is, okay.
So, you want me to sack?
Please.
I'll be honest with you.
Okay.
Thank you for your help. See ya.
I'm here because I'm a resident of this town and own a couple of pieces of property in town. One of which blends up in the road. It belongs to me. I know. I know. So we're gonna talk about that today. Several months ago, I visited this group. You weren't there at the time. And when I brought this to the attention of the group, uh, they said at the end of it, well, we're gonna have to look into this. And how much time is it going to take? And ended up being a month. And I asked that any and all information that was garnered during that thirty-month period that I would get coffee on, unless it was a legal issue. I received nothing, nothing from anybody. So here now tonight to talk about what is going to happen in America and not in Canada.
If I could just clarify that too? Um, so if we just clarify to respond to, uh, what you said about not receiving anything? Um, I believe that the town contracted with Horizons Engineering to complete a study?
Excuse me.
And then that Horizons met with you?
Thirty days, I received nothing.
Uh, from what I understand, Horizons had met with you specifically and provided you with all the planned, uh, information as part of the result from the public? We had a public meeting on that.
In that thirty-day period, they weren't even anyone. About that.
So it happened after the thirty days, you're saying?
Right.
Yeah. But it's been taken care of. We provided you with the information that was a result of our study.
Way down, bro, way down there.
Right.
Nobody said. And there's still no information available. I asked for what information is there in the town history about the road out there? And when it was to be paved, when it was to be made? How it was going to be situated on the properties? All those things. I've never received any information about that from anybody. Nobody. Nobody.
I believe we provided any information we have, so if you don't have.
You have no information. Is that the answer?
I'm not sure what you've been provided from, uh, but I think if it's everything that we've seen, it was historic documents, most of them located at the registry. I think the main issue with your case is that your, the last deed was different from all previous deeds and it citing a, a different plan. Um, and I think that, you know, that's something that Gardner Kellogg and I had met with in the past, I think it was a week or two. And Gardner, um, he, he's researching it for you. He let me know. He said one of the issues that he's having is he doesn't have access to any historic records at the registry because it's not currently open to the public. So all he has access to is your most recent deed and, um, the copy of the plan that I think that he was able to receive from, probably from you, uh, that was the one-sided in the, the, um, deed from Brian Ward. Um, and I, there was a public presentation here, actually at the Opera House, up at the Tower Room. Um, it was scheduled, you were notified about it. Uh, Horizons did a presentation and it was satisfied to the board that, um, even though we could take the property through prescriptive rights, that we didn't need to. Because, uh, the records that we have, um, are all good and accurate in that there's no infringement on your property. Your property is free and clear as far, except for probably the last deed, which may have an issue because it's, it's different than all the others.
Who's different than all the others?
All the other historic documents. And if you prefer, Mr. Greenlaw, I think you'd have been much more productive if you met with, again, maybe with Andy Nadal, who conducted the historical research. Or you could have Gardner Kellogg meet with Andy Nadal.
No, I'm not gonna talk with, uh, with your folks over at Horizons. I have no interest in talking to those people over there. They supplied a document that didn't even recognize that I had a, had any property up there. That's what I got from you from, from those folks.
And I would say at this point, if you have a difference of opinion of what we've come to, then you probably should consult with your attorney.
I'm not talking to an attorney, I'm talking about you and I. Talking about attorneys. Now let's talk about this. And it might take a little while. This parcel of land. It's been around a long time. Back in nineteen sixty-one. Uh, shoot, seventy. And the person who did the survey on that property is a company called Gordon Ainsworth Associates. Now Gordon Ainsworth is a particular person in Little. He was born in Little. He went to school in Little. And became quite famous in his job, being the surveyors, a big part. His name is here, now I'm gonna re-read it about him. Gordon Ainsworth was born in Littleton in nineteen oh nine. Attended local schools and graduated from the University of, of Bay, Massachusetts in nineteen thirty-seven. Having spent one year, one undergraduate, in the University of Maine, in the input. His majors were field civil engineering, aerospace. He wrote books about surveying. Was well-known across this whole country. And then I wanna talk about another guy, Guy McKellough. Guy McKellough worked for him and grew up as a part of him. You're saying today now to me that this, that this plan. The planning board provided. And what you're saying today, or what your Horizon people are saying today, that they didn't know what they were doing.
So I'm not saying that they said that? Um, I'm, I'm gonna, I, I will rely on their record. Mr. Greenlaw, I, I would say, just like you said, I think that Gordon Ainsworth was an expert licensed surveyor. I think that, I'm not a licensed surveyor, you're not a licensed surveyor. I think that's why it's best we let the experts talk. This, I don't know that this is the best use of the board's time. Um, and I think that.
You don't want me around?
I'm, I'm just saying, I don't think this is the best place to resolve an issue.
You understand?
Okay.
All right. The next person I wanna talk, the next couple of people I wanna talk about is Brian Ward. And I don't know what person that.
I can get them, sir.
I can. Milton Bratz? Is that a name you know? They were on the planning board. Brian Ward was the chair of the board. The chair of the board and he's. The chair of the board and he documented the approval of the road system on that subdivision. And part of it didn't buy my property. You're not wanting to tell me that my piece of property is now at risk because they didn't do their job? That's the only way you can say it, right here. That's what you're saying?
I think that's what you're saying. I think that the research we did disagrees with your research. And I think that that's where you need to have the discussion, Mr. Greenlaw, is between Gardner Kellogg and our researcher. And if you disagree with our researcher, then please use your attorney to file any action. Our researcher was Horizons Engineering.
Horizon, huh? What information has Horizon given me? Why haven't you given me any, any information?
From what I understand, Horizons met with you and provided you all information that was requested.
Except one piece of paper.
Okay.
One piece of paper, a plan. And what it says, because the plan that Brian Ward and his, and his partner, they said that you were making a straight road up that road. This guy comes along 40 years later and says, oh gee, I think it should have been curved. What the hell is that?
I, I don't think that any of that information is, is what the, any of this was based on. It's based on the fact, the last plan that was used, um, about the one that Gardner Kellogg, I think, has and you have right there, there was a certain type of line, and I can't get into the exact details, but the line itself was a measurement tool for distances between two property boundaries. It was not a front marker. Uh, the deeds all reference almost square lot. The, that plan, what's on that plan shows a rectangular lot. The only deed that refers to that parcel and that line as being the line is your last deed, which was written by Brian Ward. If you disagree with that, again, this is, there's nothing I don't think this board could do right now. The, the board and the town has taken a position. If you disagree with that position, then you should consult with your attorney.
That's either the, the, uh, this, this map here is where we got the, where we got the data from, right here. This is where we got the data from. This was what those two people back years ago, that were all, they were doing that work for the town, for you folks, not for me. They were working for the town. And they approved their work. And now you don't approve their work? And the only guy being hurt, me? Here's a, a photo of the road system in front of my property, right here. Right here. That's what they approved. That's what your town approved. Right here. This is my property, right here. See this, see this road coming, making a turn, going this way? My straight lines? That's my property. Well, what a big product buy for you? A big sweeping curve over the property. What's that got to do with something that happened 45 years ago? 45 years ago? And you're gonna buy his bullshit? Not any. That's the original plan, right there. And you folks should never, never, never vote to tell Brian Ward and Bratz that he didn't know what they, they didn't know what they were doing. That's a shame. Because that's what you gotta say if that can't, you can't approach on my property at all. This is not something I made up. This is a blow up of that product that was put in the registry of deeds.
I'm wondering if, um, because obviously we want resolution on this, Mr. Greenlaw, if it would be worth it to have, um, Mr. Nado, uh, maybe some other players here to be able to sit down, have more of an intimate conversation? Because unfortunately, we can't, I, I would, I would love to have you have resolution on this. And I think one way to do it is to have either a third party sit in, or get Mr. Nado, or get, um, maybe Brian, or get a group together, sit down and say, okay, let's look at it. Because unfortunately, tonight, we are not gonna be able to make any decisions anyways, but we would want you to have resolution.
I got a letter here from Brian Ward to Andrew back in September. So there's been some back and forth. Here's what, here's what came from him. I represent Samuel Suzanne Greenlaw at Sarah. While to his conveyance, Greenlaw and Makiva agreed to retain Guy McKellogg to survey the property. Mr. Kellogg discovered that the Makiva property had been previously surveyed in 71, revised in 72, and approved by the Littleton Planning Board in 1978. And approved by, uh, sorry. Mr. Kellogg finding that to resurvey the property would be redundant as there was an existing survey which had been approved by the Littleton Planning Board. On May 15th, 2019, Makiva conveyed the property to Greenlaw and incorporated the about 1978 subdivision plan. So they've been communicating. They've been communicating. All you did was try to avoid it. You didn't, you didn't help anybody. So, just so you understand, I have a deed and I have a, and I have an approved planning board. Bought it. I have it. And that's my life, right there. So there's no sense in doing anything more with me. I'm done. I own part of that road out there, okay? It's in my deed that I have it from that plan. Nobody made it up. I didn't make it up. Brian Ward didn't make it up. Came to the planning board for his approval and he signed it. So I can, I, I just say to you as, as a part of this thing, you're gonna go back and tell Brian Ward that he didn't do his job? I don't think so. And you haven't been any help at all. You've never sent me an item of any kind for help. Nothing. I've tried to get documents from your, from your place telling me all the time that you came and said, well, what are we going to do for a road up this hill? I can't get anything out of you folks. Nothing. Does it, is it because it doesn't, or it doesn't exist?
If we.
Doesn't exist?
If we have something, then I believe we've given it to you, sir.
No, I only, I, the only thing I have is what the Horizon did. I'm talking about staying back 40 years ago. 40 years ago. We, we made it to town saying the, the, the road was gonna be. Huh? No. You didn't supply us, supply any information? I've got the information, it's right on that plan, right there. Everything that you have provided is there. So there will be no communication. You can do what you damn well please. Make my life comfortable. I've spent my time in this, in this community for 20 years, almost, rebuilding this town. And what do I get? A slice of paste from you? Because we had a way there. We had a way there. You said no. No, 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 no. Thank you. Sorry, folks. Could I get a copy of this meeting, please? Could you see that I get a copy of this meeting? Okay, thank you. Do I have to pick it up or in some manner?
What's your phone number?
444. I'll give you myself. Thank you.
And I would just say, just to clarify, I've never said no on anything. It's just the plans have been presented to the board and the. I was just saying, I've never said no to you or anything that you've presented. If, if anything, there's been a presentation to the board and a path forward and, and nothing is, is, is from me saying no to you. I just don't want, and I'm sorry that you feel, that I've mistreated you, but I definitely don't intend to do that.
Let me just, let me say why I say that, so you'll understand. You, you, you spoke with, uh, my surveyor several times. And, uh, and I said, well, will they, would they bend that line out around that, uh, that wall? And he says, no, Sam. They will not, they told me they would not do that. And when we're talking about this, this much, you had, you had the capacity, if you wanted to, is to bend that out around there and be half decent. No, you wanna make a mess out of it. You don't make a mess out of me. And all the times that I've spoken about this, you have never come to me with any information, any help? Nothing. Nothing. 30 days, no phone calls. Excuse me.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So do you still want to make that motion?
Roger, can you get a copy of that, uh, plan that I talked about? I know the others have seen a copy. I'm sure you have a copy.
Okay, I haven't got one. Yes.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
That was just for you, Rick, for the, the, the.
So that's a two-page summary?
Yeah, the, the motion's still on.
Timeline?
And I'll say. Uh, Roger, I'm sorry.
Some of the resolutions.
Yeah, don't wait till I've done on.
Okay. So. What an interesting meeting, man.
We are adjourned.
Yes.